Welcome to the December 11, 2023, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting tonight. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that's been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. And help us to wisely evaluate our options, considering the pros and cons. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decision and to effectively carry them out. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mars, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meiser?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here. We'll ask for a motion to excuse Commissioner Meiser.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing no objection, Mr. Meiser is excused. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of November 27, 2023. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the November 27 meeting as presented.
Second. There been a motion and a second discussion? Not objection, that motion will be approved and hearing no objection, those minutes are approved. The first item on our agenda this evening is a presentation by Ann McGookie, the representative of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. This is a surprise to me.
Last minute add-on here. Good afternoon. We appreciate the opportunity to have a few minutes of your time today. I'm Ann McGookie. I'm the member of Kiwanis Club of Sandusky, and I am the coordinator for our signature project, which is Dolly Parton's Imagination Library of Erie County. I'd also like to introduce Ms. Timko. She represents the State Dolly Parton Program, and she's our new regional director, so she's with me today as well. Especially during this time of the year, we are reminded of all of our blessings, and in particular the people who care about our communities, such as the Sandusky City Commission. On behalf of Kiwanis Club, I would like to thank the City Commission for your ongoing support of this important program, which encourages and supports early childhood literacy. But I can't think of a better way to express this appreciation but to have you here directly, and as I say, from the mouths of babes back here, and their parents. So here to represent the many children of Sandusky and Erie County who are reaping the benefit of the amazing books that are supported by the Sandusky City Commission, I'd like to introduce the Frisch family, three-year-old Kinsley and her mom Melissa, and also the family with nine-month-old Cairo, who's making himself very well-known right now, and his mom Hannah. They're here to share a little bit of their Imagination Library journey with you.
Hi.
What do you want to say?
I don't know.
Do you like getting books in the mail?
Yeah.
We talked about the little bit of what she was going to say before she came, and her favorite part is getting the book in the mail. So she insists on getting the book out of the mailbox herself, and that's her favorite part. And then, of course, we read the books together, and she couldn't pick her favorite book, so we brought a bag of the books that we have gotten in the mail. She turned three in August, so you can do the math on how many books she's gotten over the years. But I am an elementary reading teacher, so early literacy is obviously very important in our home, and we've gotten a variety of books over the years. Some of them have...
I'm sorry, speaker.
Okay, okay, what do you want to say?
Hi.
That's it.
Some of them have different languages in them, which I feel like is very important to introduce at a young age also. And she started preschool this fall, so it has really been helpful just to...
I want to talk one more time.
Okay, one more time.
Ah.
Okay. Just to continue what she's learning at preschool at home, and just to continue to have a book in her hand at all times. So it's nice to have the free books in her hands, and again, to just...
I'm sorry, speaker.
Okay. Just to have those different types of books that maybe we wouldn't pick out at the library or at the store, so...
I'm sorry, speaker. Speaker. I'm sorry, speaker.
I have a... I need your help with this. I want you to show... Can you help me carry it out? These are very iconic Dolly books.
Yes.
Legend of the Cut, we all grew up with that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Potted in Many Colors, Dolly's Own Story, and Corduroy, of course, everybody's favorite thing to hear.
Can you turn so Tom can get a good picture of you with that, the other direction?
These were made by the kids for our children, the four-year-olds.
Perfect.
One of our illustrious preschools in town takes their stuff. The cheese.
Excellent.
Thank you. And Hannah, you want to say a few words? Then we'll get out of your hair. This is for the commissioners, they can do whatever they want.
We'll put it on display.
Hello, I just want to say thank you for supporting this program. This is Cairo. He just turned nine months old, and we signed up for Imagination Library in the hospital. So he's been getting books for the past eight months. We started reading to him when we came home from the hospital, so I've watched him, it's developed his eyesight, the more he could see, the more he was engaged with the books. We'll sit and normally read about three books at a time, and he likes, he's been learning his colors, and you can see that he's starting to pick up on more. This one, actually, it's like an interactive... Yeah. Interactive, different flaps, and at the end, his favorite part, the last page, it's a surprise peekaboo mirror. Who is this? Whoa, can you see yourself?
Me.
Who is that? That's you. So he likes to engage and sit, and he really pays attention. He likes to flip the pages himself, so he's starting to get excited and talk to the pages more, so it's fun to see him as he's growing, getting more excited, and I'm sure he's going to have a great vocabulary. He's really busy and in tune with everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann, I'm impressed with your market penetration in Erie County now. Is that 66%? Is that correct?
Yes.
And my understanding is that is close to what we would all realize to be 100%, because to get to 70, people are always moving, so it's tough to get, you know, a number higher than that.
It is nationally, 70% is about the average, what a county you can see in terms of, because you get to the end of the month, and at the end of November, we were just shy of 2,500, which would have been our record.
Yeah.
And then it gets graduating off.
Yeah, and you lose them. Sure, it starts over.
Yeah, you've got to build that up again. But with our local partners, like the hospital and other medical providers, we're getting these children as soon as they're born and getting them registered, so they will, you know, look at the full 60 books.
Sure. Thanks, thanks for doing this, and thanks for being a part of this.
Thank you.
You know, our commitment is a multi-year commitment. I think we're probably just in year two of a multi-year commitment, and I must insist that you do the same presentation for Commissioner Shenego and Oldson Schoffler.
Yeah, actually, this morning.
Good.
I really wanted to come here, but you guys are at the evening.
Yeah, I get it. Thank you, thanks for taking the time, and thanks for...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the state, I just want to say thank you for your dedication to the program. Erie County is an example of all levels of government working together to fund this program, and it's something we would love to replicate in every county, but you guys are definitely the example, so thank you so much.
This issue's allowed us to do that. I mean, it is somewhat times a rarity, but this issue's allowed us to work hand-in-hand with our friends from the county.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Not objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion's approved. I do not recall a heavy agenda that we have, that we've had in the past, but first, we will have our public participation on any items that pertain to agenda items.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'd like to comment on the $900,000 grant being given to the Greater Sandusky Partnership, I'm going to call it GSP. This is for mostly event planning, marketing, and some development, I guess. This is part of Cedar Point's MOU, Strings Attached, when they made out the MOU. I look at this as money for a consultant lobbyist for the business people. Where's our consultant lobbyist? We shouldn't be giving out this kind of money. This is $300,000 for three years. $300,000 a year for three years. I don't understand why the city can't, for that kind of money, if they're going to spend that kind of money, why we can't have our own consultant, hire our own consultant, put him on contract, so there's more transparency. Nonprofits don't have any transparency, nothing. We don't know what they're doing. I asked for the invoice last time for GSP, and the invoice came back with $125,000 for six months of their work. It wasn't even detailed. We don't know what they spent that money on. We just have a general idea. So if we had our own consultant and we contracted him out, it would be for all the people, not just for the business people. Full transparency. I have some questions here, there's about six of them, Mr. Brady. First of all, Section 39, I was wondering if this isn't a violation of the city charter, because this is being done, this is being passed, and we have three new commissioners sitting over here that can't weigh in on this, can't vote. I don't know if that's a coincidence or what, but I think that should have at least waited until these people were seated. So if the city attorney could let me know if Section 39 is in violation, that means, I believe, it's the contract is being done, and commissioners, some of these commissioners are not on board yet. Number two, the grant money, I'm wondering if some of this grant money is going to pay for salaries for GSP. You have some heavy hitter salaries listed for GSP. You've got the CEO, the chairman, and the destination manager. Those salaries mount up to a lot of money, and I'm wondering if any of this money is going for their salaries. Number three, I'd like to know if Joe Roman has a consulting, a development consulting firm, whether or not he's under contract as a third party for GSP. Number five, I'd like to see some invoice details, and I'd like to know from Ms. Reader if there's going to be some details instead of just $300,000 for the year as an invoice amount. If we're going to have hours detailed of what they spent their time on. And number six, how does the, this is another one for Reader, how does the city promise out money three years in advance when our budget only goes year to year? How do you do that? How can you certify money like that? Last but not least is, I view, this GSP is a powerful nonprofit. They've got a bunch of nonprofits under their umbrella, and I'm concerned they're going to become a shadow government as Whoopser is a co-city manager. That's how I view it. We elect seven city commissioners. We do not elect GSP to run this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Additional comments from the public regarding items on the agenda?
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies, thank you for your time. An issue came up, I'm Bob Resley, I have the subway on Wayne Street. I've been involved in businesses in the city of Sandusky. If you put them all together, I came in '88, '84, I have 131 years of doing business in Sandusky. The different subways, through Convenia Food Mart, and we had an issue come up with the subway on Wayne Street. There's a new color came up, and the color to the building means an awful lot, especially to smaller businesses like myself. And we had no idea, I didn't know I was in a historic district, I didn't know I had a historic building. All we did is, we go to work every day and we do the best we can. They came up with a color, we painted the building that color, same way I did in Huron, Morroville, Belleville, different cities, and it was a hit. Everybody seemed to have liked it. I was informed at one of our meetings that the shade is not the right shade, it's too bright, but it does what it was meant to do. And I'm being asked to change the color and to go backwards on something that's actually working. How do I know this? Number one, from the other stores, and the other thing, we took a little petition, and within a very short period of time, the manager, Toby, there, we have over 100 names between Facebook and people coming in saying they like the color. For me to be asked to put money back into the building, which I take care of any property I have, and go backwards and darken the color seems very contrary to the very reason I'm there in trying to make the place a place that people visualize and come to. I've seen throughout the city, which I think they've done a great job with some of the murals and some of the things, draws attention, I think it's great. All I'm asking for is to reconsider for us to put money back into the building to make it darker than what it is, and something that is working and everybody seems to have been very positive for. And I thank you again for your time, and I ask you to reconsider that.
Thank you, Mr. Resley. Additional public comments on any items that are on the agenda? Seeing no one rushed to the podium, we'll get off of that section. Return to our regular agenda, Ms. Mars, you present. Instead of presenting item number one, I first need to ask for a motion to lift from the table item number one. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
There been a motion and a second. Ms. Mars, will you call the roll on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. I got your signal, Ms. Mars, that I've missed the consent agenda. So I will, we'll do, we'll deal with this item, and then we'll go back to the consent agenda. Thank you for inviting me there. We don't need a motion, gentlemen, because we've already motioned this item onto the agenda, so we'll move right to the discussion phase of this. We have discussion regarding that item. Ms. Mars, you present that item to remind us what it is?
Item one needs a motion to untable. It is approval of ED Fund Grant Agreement with WTF R2 Investments. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing approving a grant in the amount of $15,000 through the Economic Development Fund Program to WTF R2 Investments LLC, doing business as What the Fried Rice, in relation to property located at 186 East Market Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I guess my understanding is that we've already motioned and seconded this, so we don't need a motion.
Move right to discussion.
And I just simply want to say that after further consideration and some discussions with some colleagues, I think this grant is appropriate, and I am satisfied, more importantly, that Ms. Gilson already has in the works a series of modifications to our grant and loan program for the commission to consider going forward. We've talked before about it's become a more attractive place to do business, we need to be, we can be a little bit more stinting in terms of the grant awards and some conditions that we put on grants or loans or what they may be. So I'm satisfied that we're moving in the right direction, that this is the right grant for this business.
Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I also met with Ms. Gilson and city manager, and they are well on their way to writing a much better document for our grants going forward, so I'm comfortable with this.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Mars, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Commissioners, we have 16 items on the consent agenda. We'll now dispense with those or deal with those. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Mars, you present the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, permission to participate in internet sales calendar year 2024. Item B, approval to pay Ohio EPA license to operate for Big Island Water Works calendar year 2024. Item C, approval to pay Ohio EPA annual discharge fee for the wastewater treatment plant calendar year 2023. Item D, approval to submit to Ohio's Urban Forestry Grant Program 2023. Item E, approval of amendment number one to PDSA for East Perkins Ave Waterline Project with Bramhall. Item F, approval of 2024 chemical contracts for Big Island Water Treatment Plant and the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Item G, approval to amend ordinance 21082 for encroachment at 426 Warren Street. Item H, approval to submit systemic safety improvement grant applications to ODOT. Item I, approval of change order number one and final deduct for East Monroe Street Project with Erie Blacktop. Item J, approval of change order number one and final deduct 2023 sidewalk project with Hula Construction. Item K, approval of 2024 consulting contract with George Polis. Item L, approval of 2024 consulting contract with Robert Statler. Item M, approval to submit ODNR Coastal Management Assistant Grants. Item N, approval of contract for HUD fiscal year 2024 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2024 Action Plan. Item O, approval of 2024 administrative employees 2% wage increase.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through O, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions is drafted and presented to the city commission. Under the consent agenda shall take an effect in accordance with section, with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Just a tip of the hat to our incoming commissioners. This is something that we borrowed from the school board, and my wife would tell me, I serve with all of you, and my wife would tell me about the consent agenda. She said, why don't we have something like that? So we tried at first to get a consent agenda adopted, and we had some resistance. There were some members who loved to, at the time, loved to hear the then clerk pronounce words such as sodium permanganate and hydrofluoric acid, or however that's pronounced. But once we got rid of those couple of folks who loved the schadenfreude of the event, we were able to get the consent agenda adopted. We've been working with it now for eight years, and I think we've had a judicious use of not putting things on there. We don't put things on there to slide it under the table. If it's something that needs to be discussed, it's on the regular agenda. So these are generally things that we've all looked at many, many times before and understand, and certainly if we don't, we have the opportunity to talk to some of our colleagues that have been around for a little while or with staff to find out what the history is. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Murray, in that dissertation, you used a German verb that I wonder, I'm sure you know the meaning of, I wonder if you can spell it for us?
Give me a chance to look it up.
Yeah, I know where that's going. Okay, thank you. Ms. Mars, you call the roll on those motions, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now on the ordinance and resolutions.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those resolutions and ordinances are passed. We will go back to our regular agenda if Ms. Mars will present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing approving a grant in the amount of $900,000 to the Greater Sandusky Partnership for the purpose of furthering community and economic development and providing services to the city, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second. I know that Mr. Whoopser is in the audience, and I wonder if he would like to step to the podium and provide us with some information for the public.
Mr. President, if you could allow me first to address the commission.
Certainly.
Thank you. Through the chair to all commissioners, today we ask your consideration of a grant in the amount of $300,000 per year for three years to the Greater Sandusky Partnership. This investment in the Greater Sandusky Partnership is an expression of support in the creation of a regional comprehensive vision for improving quality of life and economic vibrancy for our residents and for attracting newcomers and visitors to the greatest destination on the Great Lakes. If approved, the funds will be used to cover expenses related to operations of the Greater Sandusky Partnership, as well as direct programming coordinated and offered by the organization. The Greater Sandusky Partnership has committed that at least 50% of the grant, $150,000 or more, will be used to cover special events, project and program implementation, and planning advocacy efforts. In 2022, this body supported the Greater Sandusky Partnership with a grant in the amount of $150,000. I note a portion of that grant was earmarked for the Erie County Economic Development Corporation. Today's request is consistent with the 2022 commitment. The additional funds you are being asked to consider will cover programming such as Party at the Pier and a variety of other special events designed to continue the momentum in making Sandusky a year-round, special and unique place for residents and visitors. With us today to speak more about the organization and its areas of focus is Greater Sandusky Partnership's Executive Director, Eric Whoopser. Mr. Whoopser will share with you the scope of work submitted by the Greater Sandusky Partnership, which details the four areas the partnership will carry out and grow over the course of this grant term. These areas include placemaking through Destination Sandusky, housing production, advocacy and planning, and regional economic development. Mr. Whoopser and his staff have worked closely with me and the Community Development Department to develop benchmarks related to their request. The Greater Sandusky Partnership will present year-end progress on an annual basis on their progress toward achievement of those stated metrics for success. Beyond the close collaboration we have with the Greater Sandusky Partnership and their affiliate organizations, Acadec, the Erie County Chamber of Commerce, and Destination Sandusky staff, we will also meet quarterly to track progress in realizing these goals. At this time, I invite Eric to address the city commission, city staff, residents, and stakeholders on this request.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sure.
The commission president, the commission, thank you, Director Gilson. That was really good. I'm not sure I have a significant presentation to make beyond her thorough report, but I do want to say thank you to the city commission, thank you to city manager Orzak, as well as the directors. In addition to myself, we have our chair from the Greater Sandusky Partnership, Duff Milkie, who's been an active partner to the city's growth and progress.
residents, and stakeholders on this request.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sure.
The commission president, the commission, thank you, Director Gilson. That was really good. I'm not sure I have a significant presentation to make beyond her thorough report, but I do want to say thank you to the City Commission. Thank you to city manager Orzak, as well as the directors. In addition to myself, we have our chair from the Greater Sandusky Partnership, Duff Milkie, who's been an active partner to the city's growth and progress over the last decade or more, as well as several members of our staff. McKenna, the director of our Firelands Forward program. Alyssa, who oversees our RISE program. Nico, who oversees business development. And Mackenzie Spriggs, who you also know well as a former city employee, is overseeing the Destination Sandusky program. And Colleen did say it really well. This is a comprehensive opportunity for our region to build on the success that it's had under the leadership of this commission and what it will have under the leadership of a future commission to scale it up. Not unlike many of the other major achievements of this commission and the city staff over the last decade, the conversation around the need for a scaled-up economic development partner that took the smaller organizations of Acadec and the Erie County Chamber of Commerce is a 20-year conversation. I can't take any credit for having brought that finally together. It was Duff's leadership in partnership with many others who are part of the Greater Sandusky Partnership, who are stakeholders of the Acadec organization and stakeholders of the Erie County Chamber of Commerce, who came together and did so based on commitments just like the one that the city made in '22 that we're asking the city to make again tonight. Three-year commitments from the city's largest employers, from Civista, Cedar Fair, Firelands Health, working on a three-year commitment, Ben Simon this year from Shores and Islands, Ohio, from Shores and Islands, Ohio, all of which was made under the idea that we can go further together than we can individually. And I will say, not to respond to the comment from the audience, but to be responsive, the last thing we purport to be, or would ever be, is a shadow government or co-partner to the city. You have a strong city manager, you have a strong commission. We expect and hope to be a responsive partner who can pool the city's resources. The reason to do this is to pool those resources with other private resources, with philanthropic resources, and resources from other local government partners, as well as the state and federal government, so we can do more together than any of us could individually. So with that, what is the Greater Sandusky Partnership? As I just described it, it's a regional economic development organization created from the consolidation of existing organizations, including Acadec, Firelands Forward, the Chamber of Commerce, and Destination Sandusky. There are actually other programs that are looking at becoming affiliated partners of the GSP as well. That was brought together with the idea that the partnership's mission would be to enhance the quality of life and economic vibrancy of the region and position it as the greatest region on the Great Lakes. We're already well on our way, but this is an opportunity, again, to pool resources and to think bigger. But before, one would assume that the idea of this is all regional, well, it has a regional footprint. The largest part of this contract is for the work that we will do under Destination Sandusky, which was the case in 2021 when the city first committed to be a part of GSP, because Destination Sandusky specifically has a focus on the place-based redevelopment, marketing, and programming of downtown Sandusky through special events. Director Gilson mentioned the Party at the Pier. That is part of that contract. So the city will continue to make the investment that it was making in the Party at the Pier. It will make it through GSP, and what that does, as part of this model for public-private partnership, is gives us the opportunity to go to our base of members of over 400 and raise additional private sponsors to leverage the city's dollars. So once again, your programming dollars go further by combining them with the private dollars. In addition to that branded marketing, as you can see in the slide, there's a rebranding process that Mackenzie led with a group of stakeholders that the city participated in for a brand for the Destination Sandusky organization, but also a brand for Sandusky. And that was a group of stakeholders specifically from the public sector, from the private sector, from the downtown community, from the neighborhood community. Cedar Point, many others were represented. But the idea is we can help push that brand. We're part of the Shores and Islands region, but Sandusky has a community its own, needs to be marketed and branded. We think, again, we can pool private and public resources in a way to create an authentic brand that helps market us as a destination for new residents, for new visitors, and for those who want to invest in business here. Merchant services and retail and placemaking, other activities. You can see up there a picture of the farmer's market. We do manage the farmer's market. This was the first year of management by Destination Sandusky. It's also the first several years that the farmer's market was able to perform in the black. That's the type of scale I think that we can do as we incrementally make improvements, because at the end of the day, while we focus on large-scale projects on the region, there's ways to attract investment and to attract jobs, and there are those great investments happening. Part of this is waking up every day and providing the critical services in each part of the city that create a magnet for, you know, people to come down. And that's programming, it's marketing. Those are the softer sides, but at the end of the day, it's equally important to creating a stronger value for the community. In addition to housing production, this is a picture of a unique project that the city has been leading to create an affordable housing development at the Osborne School. We know, and through Firelands Forward, now one of our affiliate programs, we did a housing study that shows the need immediately for thousands of units of housing in Sandusky and Erie County, ranging from affordable to market rate. Simply put, we're not building enough housing. One of the parts of this contract is for us to work in the city, working with the city commission and with the city staff, to identify the types of housing that are appropriate for the city, create a pipeline of sites and a pipeline of potential interested builders, and make connections between those two things to help scale up housing production. It's also one of the things that we'll track as part of this agreement. Advocacy and planning, you know, there's a great example, and Director Klein and many others worked on this, of attracting a $24.5 million federal grant to the Route 6 and Pathway Project. That's exactly the type of investment that we can use the way to the private sector to combine with public sector priorities. In fact, we've already talked to the city about its priorities for the upcoming capital budget. How do we bring more resources from the state and federal government back to our community for regional priorities as established by our partners on the city commission? We think we can do that. We've been a part of conversations as it relates to the transit system that I know the Community Development Department is leading. I think we can be a voice to help bring onboard additional partners to the priorities that emerge from that plan. So this is an example of how we can use the scale of GSP, was once we identify local priorities through the democratic process, is to make sure that we rally around those and that all of us are pulling in the right direction to attract more resources into the community. Regional economic development, and this is the work that the city has been supporting that is now part of the GSP for the longest time through its contract with the Erie County Economic Development Corporation. You've seen investments in places like American Quality Stripping, Okamoto, Loris Printing, several other investments that have flowed from the state to businesses located right in Sandusky, Ohio, totaling billions of dollars. Acadec has historically been the conduit to those funds on behalf of the local community. We believe we can scale that work up. We're also the administrators of the Erie County Port Authority. I think that's a tool that can be built on. Commissioner Pajali, in full disclosure, serves on the board of that. We want to use that to attract more financing for more projects, to make it easier to do development in Sandusky and Erie County. The RISE program has been a longstanding program that the city has supported to support people who are trying to start businesses. They layered on and are scaling up two years ago. The MBAT component of that, which is the Minority Business Empowerment Task Force, which has made grants, I believe, to over 20 minority businesses, the majority of which are based in Sandusky. We will continue that work, and we will continue to do workforce development at scale, which was a big part of the city stepping in in 2021 to scale it up, was to support the work of Firelands Forward, which is how we attract talent regionally to the community, much of which will live in Sandusky, but also support Sandusky employers to continue to thrive. And finally, for each and every one of these, and this gets to the questions of what we will measure, there's a very detailed proposal that was developed through five or six meetings with Colleen. Our staff was engaged, city staff was engaged. We developed very specifically how we can deliver and how we can be tracked for delivery through regular meetings, regular reports, but there are numbers and metrics set aside all of this. The reason for asking for the three-year commitment is because, as we know through all the great work that's been done in the city the last 10 years, building something, a strong foundation for transformational growth doesn't always happen overnight. We will have short-term wins. We had one Friday night, the Winter Wonderland was a great event. I don't know for those who came down, but it was magical, and we were a part of that right alongside the city of promoting that event. That's the type of partnership you'll see in the short term, even in the long term, as we prepare this region to grow and to attract billions of dollars of investment. So we look forward to that, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions or comments from Mr. Whoopser?
Commissioner. Mr. Murray. I was fairly confident when Mr. Whoopser said he didn't have much more to add, that was probably an understatement. But I want to give you all a little bit of history. When I first joined the commission 18 years ago, we were at odds with ourselves, with every other community in the area, with Erie County, with Perkins Township, and we're getting anywhere. We were falling behind. All of these internecine wars took a toll on the city. We, in a lot of ways, weren't the partner that we should have been to economic growth in the larger community. That changed 10 years ago. Mr. Whoopser had a lot to do with that, but it also had a lot to do with the commission's resolve to put ourselves in a better place. We developed a strategic plan, and we began executing upon it. Having the plan was critical. Having the ability to execute on it was critical. Having the political will to execute on it was also essential. But somewhere along the way, five, six years ago, it began to occur to me that we just lacked the right platform in order to be able to tackle some of these larger problems. Economic development needs to be handled on a larger basis, not just city, not just county, but on a regional basis, and needs to occur in the context of a conversation with businesses and other communities, because we need the investment, and we need the expertise that a lot of those folks have to be able to bring to bear. And participating in a public forum versus being able to have conversations among themselves provides for a different result. I understand the transparency issues, but transparency sometimes is counterproductive to economic development. Some of those conversations must occur in private, and those are decisions well supported by Ohio law. So we got ourselves to this point. We're about five, six years into the city's real transformation, and a wonderful thing happened that Duff Milkie, out of the blue, I learned, had started along with some others, many others, on effort to develop something like this. I'd watched what had been happening in Cuyahoga County in Cleveland. They had a Cleveland Partnership for Growth, which is very, very successful. And I just really thought that model made a lot of sense for Sandusky. I've been talking about it ever since at these meetings, in the newspaper. This is the most important thing to come along since, in my opinion, the bicentennial plan and the work that we've done in the last 10 years. This is what is necessary in order to be able to ramp up the success of the last 10 years and to take that to the next level. The city does not by itself have the ability to address the housing needs that are so evident in the area, doesn't have the ability by itself to address the workforce development needs that are obvious. And if we don't have something like GSP and the efforts that it will be able to make, I don't think that we'll be able to sustain the trajectory that we have in the area. One last thought, I mean, I recognize there's always a question about when there's an incoming commission, what, do you vote on the legislation you've been working on for a long period of time, or do you kick that down the road to the next commission? I've seen this question now six times. When an old commission is ramping up business and there's a new commission in the wings, my own opinion on that is, we've been looking at this for years. It's time to make this happen and to take the vote, and so I very much support making the decision today and to continuing the conversation in the future with my new incoming colleagues. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Pajali.
Mr. Chairman, I think that one of the reasons I'm going to be a yes vote is because you've got all these other entities funding mechanisms that are willing to back this effort. One thing about Mr. Whoopser is, love him or hate him, he can bring some development, some deals to the table, and then it's inherent on us to analyze those deals and either approve them or deny them. So I think we've got the right man for the job, and if these other entities are willing to back you, I think we've got to give them a chance. And there is a clause in here that says the grant will be subject to annual renewal based on performance and deliverables met. So there is something in there for the new commission to look at next year when we move forward.
Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I don't have any questions for Mr. Whoopser. I do, since this is 13, between now and next week, I need some information about the financing, in terms of why we chose capital projects funding and to take money from as opposed to other locations. So I'd like to talk about the money that we have from issue eight, how much of that is going into economic development. Likewise, that from the admissions tax and development. And I'm not sure I'm excited about doing fewer projects, capital projects, which I think we need, which is our upgrades at bus stations, getting the water out of our basements and some of those things. So I don't have a problem with this, other than I would like to talk about between now and then where we take the money from for doing this. Also, it would be nice to know who all is in this, what they're contributing, and go from there. Other than that, yes, ramping up, this is probably necessary for us, for our region to progress. This is a good thing to do, is if we can accomplish what's been put before us, it's a good thing.
Additional comments, commissioners?
Commissioner Brady, if I, just really briefly.
Mr. Whoopser.
Just through the commission president, Commissioner Poole, just to clarify, while it's listed under capital projects, and I think that's always been something that confused me even when I was city manager, the programming and marketing dollars in particular are actually the funds that were set aside specifically for programming and marketing as part of issue eight. They were just always a transfer, so it's not anything that's ever been spent on infrastructure before. It's just how we classified, and Director Reader can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just the heading of capital is a little bit misleading in this sense.
Yeah, that's a lot of information to process so quickly, which is why we'll spend the next two weeks making sure it is. The issue is, you've seen, this is going to be a lot of marketing and a lot of duplicating of things that we've already started, and I need to be sure that the money we give you is the money that we're already spending and that I'm not, that's what I want to make sure, that make sure where the money's coming from, so that something else is not shorted, some other line item that is important to the rest of the community. Because as we, this economic development works in a lot of ways, but essentially, the folks that own the businesses that get the customers, they make the money. Those of us that ride the bus are still cold out, standing there in the cold. So, thank you.
Additional comments, commissioner? I know we've talked a lot in this presentation with our comments about economic development, and I, for myself, I perceive it as much more than just economic development. It spans so many other things. It spans affordable housing. It spans growing the population, you know, which is essential to a vibrant city. There are so many of our strategic partners that are already onboard, and they aren't onboard for a week, or for a month, or for a year. There are partners I know that you have that have made multi-year commitments. I understand that, and I believe that we have talented economic development people on our staff. This is so much more than that. Our bandwidth to accomplish things like this can never be done in a city our size. We are blessed, I think, to have this idea come to fruition at this point in time, and will we measure, do we have metrics to measure it? Absolutely we do, and we will. So we're counting on GSP delivering. But I am a firm believer, as I was in Acadec 11 years ago when we first put $30,000 into it. Now we're putting $300,000 into it, but I believe now as I did then, this is bread cast on the water, and it will return more than tenfold. So I know that's a big ask, but we're counting on you, I can tell you that. Additional comments, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
I will be abstaining from this, as I am a board member on the Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Staying.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed under first reading, and it will return in two weeks for a second reading. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a second amendment to the Enterprise Zone Agreement with Fike Building LLC relating to property located at 158 through 160 East Market Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, I wonder if you can share with us the logistics of what we're doing here. I think that I understand it, but I'd like the public to hear it also.
Absolutely. Through the chair to the commissioners. The Fike Building project was completed in the fall of 2023, and rental of the units is underway. On October 19th of this year, the city was notified by the chief deputy auditor of Erie County that the commercial appraiser will not post any value for the new improvements at the Fike Building until the tax year 2024 for the collection in 2025, requiring a second amendment to this agreement. The Enterprise Zone second amendment is needed to reflect that no exemption under the Enterprise Zone Agreement shall commence the Enterprise Zone Agreement shall commence after 2024 nor extend beyond 2033.
Thank you, Mr. Gilson. Comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Murray.
We've had this several times, come up several times over the years, where we had a tax payment that we approved for a 10-year period. The project was interrupted. This is the best excuse I've ever seen, that COVID came along, and all of a sudden, officers weren't in vogue anymore, and they quickly adapted to our great benefit as a community to turning those into apartments. So I think this is appropriate to reapprove this and reset the clock.
Additional comments, commissioners? Ms. Myers, do you call the role on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please. And we'll deal with those one at a time, so it would be number four, resolution number one.
And I was asked by law to state that what we're to do this evening is select one of these three resolutions. Resolution number one. It's requested a resolution be passed remanding MRE Development Company LLC's Doing Business as Subway appeal of the Sandusky Landmark Commission decision to deny the certificate appropriateness for the exterior paint color alterations of the building located at 160 Wayne Street to the Landmark Commission in order to hold a de novo hearing and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
I have a question. If we choose, if we don't make a motion on this resolution, it just dies, right? We move on to the next one? Is that correct?
I believe that would be correct.
That's how it works?
If, if, if we don't have a motion to move forward, it dies.
If there's no motion, it dies, although at some point, someone could revisit that, but it would die at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Hastings, is your direction to the clerk to read all three motions, or do we need to deal with these one resolution?
I think it would be best to read all three.
I do, I do.
And then, and then the commission choose which of the three options that we have outlined.
I agree.
Resolution two. It's requested a resolution be passed denying MRE Development Company's Doing Business as Subway appeal of the Sandusky Landmark Commission. Item three. It is requested a resolution be passed granting MRE Development Company Doing Business as Subway appeal of the Sandusky Landmark Commission decision.
Commissioners, having heard all of these resolutions, do I have a motion for any of them?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner White.
I move for the adoption of resolution one, under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
My understanding is that the owner did not have an opportunity to present at the planning commission meeting, and I think there was just a miscommunication. I think it would be best if the Landmark Commission had an opportunity to consider the arguments the gentleman made tonight and has subsequently made, so I think that's the best direction to go.
Additional, additional discussion, commissioners?
Chairman.
Mr. Poehl.
I can't support that resolution. The, the Landmark Commission, the information that this gentleman presented to us today at that time, he simply didn't present it personally. It was included in the information, in the written information for the, that came with their agenda packet, dealing with his reasons for doing this, putting him through, additionally, the Landmark Commission has already canceled their next meeting. It's on the city website, which is a couple days from now, which means he's going to have to wait until they decide to have another meeting. He then has to, has to go through the process of coming back down here, talking to them. They spent 40 seconds on that, deliberating that before they said no. Giving him a second no and sending him back to us, kicking us down the road, is just unreasonable, the way to treat, to treat them. If this commission has no intent, intends to go up or down on this, now's the time to do it without forcing him to go back to that committee and be told no again, unless there's something. If he would like to say he wants to go back and make another presentation for them, then I can support this, but otherwise, I don't see any reason to think that it's going to change, because there's not any additional information.
Additional discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think there's a term in law, and maybe the lawyers at the table can correct me if I'm wrong, it's, they refer to it as, "The case is not ripe yet." And then they send it back to the lower courts to reconsider and make a decision. I, I don't think this is ripe yet, and I think it would be proper to send it back and give the owner a chance to speak at the hearing and maybe come up with some sort of a compromise or a deal.
Additional comments, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the role, please, on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that resolution is passed. We'll send that back to the Landmark Commission for a hearing. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Tobo Marine LLC Doing Business as Lake Erie Towing of Sandusky, Ohio for the operation and management of the Paper District Marina, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'll be abstaining, giving partial ownership in a competing business, as I have for many years now.
Additional, additional comments, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, that should be abstain, please.
My vote was yes, and that ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a first amendment to the host venue agreement with World Triathlon Corporation and Lake Erie Shores and Islands for services related to hosting Ironman 70.3 Ohio Triathlon events for the Division of Parks and Recreation, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner White.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm glad that we're going to continue this. I can't compete in that, at my advanced age, in arthritic knees, but I think it's really neat to go down. I guess I can watch out of my truck with my binoculars and think about when I was 18 again. So I think it's great for the city, though.
Additional discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I got my vote mixed up on the last piece of legislation, because I was looking forward to this one, I was so excited, I lost track of where I was. Look, this is the best investment we've ever made, I think, for the $25,000, the support that we provide, the exposure of the city to just people from around the state, around the country, and including some around the world, I think is just, is priceless. Plus, a lot of local folks, I have a great time, and I was, I was, however, extremely disappointed by Mr. Waddington's comments. I was going to challenge him this year.
Oh, yeah.
If you do a relay, if you love swimming, I'll do the bike.
Oh, okay. Swimming and bike, oh, wow, okay. Oh, boy.
That bike of yours has got some pretty little gears. You're going to be out there a long time.
Maybe a trike.
Yeah.
You have to talk like that.
You know, it's so rare that, that I tell someone to do something and they really do it, but after the last event, I told Jason to nail this down for a long-term contract, and you got it done. Tell him, Jason, tell him this was my idea.
You said you were going to sign up, too.
My wife doesn't listen to my ideas at all, I'm glad that you do.
Did you hear that last part?
I have to sign up?
Yeah.
Probably not good to have, but I'll be there to blow the whistle when it starts to sound like. Yeah, great, great, great event for our city, and honestly, I stood there at 6:15, I think, in the morning, and when you watch 1,600 young people, old people, middle-aged people, enter the water four at a time, it is a spectacular sight. And, and it's hard, it's hard to look at the whole crowd, because they go down the street and around the corner. And I think that each one of those people come to Sandusky, they get to see our city, they buy supper, they buy breakfast, most of them stay overnight, so it's a terrific economic boom for us. So I thank you for getting that done, and I hope this three-year contract extends to the next, for the next 30 years.
Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
But this summer, it was, at 6:15, it was relatively cold, and you had several hundred swimmers waiting to get in the water, and you filibustered for 15 minutes. You made them all freezing by the time they got in the water.
I was, I was brief on that, I was very brief.
You were.
But motivational, I will say.
Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed.
Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a two-year agreement with Pizarski Enterprises LLC Doing Business as Bay Area Lawn Care for lawn spring services at the Mills Creek Golf Course for the seasons in calendar year 2024 and calendar year 2025, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Waddington, is this good for our golf course?
Yes, but I have to abstain, because I use Bay Area for my yard.
All right. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Abstain.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Abstain.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed.
Ms. Myers, we present the next ordinance.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Sandusky Bait Company of Flat Rock, Ohio, for the operation of a retail business for the sale of bait and tackle, convenience items, food, beverages, and fishing equipment, and supplies at the building located at the Shelby Street Boat Launch Ramp Facility for the period of January 1st, 2024 through January 31st, 2026, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner White.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I get down there quite a bit in the mornings, especially in the weekends, and I think they do a great job. I hope they stay, I think they've been with us for a few years now, and I think it's usually picked up the litter and that, they keep it tidy down there, so we've got a lot more fishermen using that dock now, that show us your boat ramp.
In my understanding, is the launch will continue to be free of charge?
Yep.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed.
Ms. Myers, you present item number nine, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Garner Sanitation Service Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the rental and service of portable restrooms in city parks, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
to approve the first change order for work performed by Moser Construction Incorporated of Fremont, Ohio, for the Sandusky Justice Center project in the amount of $483,730.70, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner White.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, a lot of money here. We'd all feel a lot more comfortable if you could tell us this is the first and the last change order, but I'm pretty sure that's not going to happen.
Yes, Commission President, this is something that, you know, I don't come here lightly. We certainly negotiate these with the contractor as we're moving forward with the project. And we did save quite a bit of money on those negotiations. But what happened was, when we go out to bid for a project, we included the Phase 1 that was done in 2019. The asbestos hasn't changed, so we figured that that report was okay. And when EPA showed up on site just to look at the work, they realized, they made the recommendation to sample some other areas that previously were sampled and tested negative for asbestos-containing material. When our contractor went and sampled that, it came back as positive. And that was items that were visible at the time, ceilings, floor tiles, things like that, that previously were not assumed to be asbestos-containing materials. So we immediately went into a delay and then also sampled Phase 2 of the project. Came back that a lot of those areas as well were asbestos. So we had to negotiate with the contractor. We ordered them to do the work of removing it, making sure that the site was going to be safe for the employees. And then additionally, as they were removing some of the walls, the drywall, things like that, there were some pipe insulation and other materials, window, things like that, came back as positive as well. So we removed all of the asbestos. We're moving forward with Phase 2. The contract that we have in front of us is for all of the flooring and ceiling tile in Phase 2 as well. And there should, there might be a couple pop-up items like insulation and those types of things that were not visible at the time that they did those evaluations. The other two items that are on here are both structurally related. The first one, as we were going through the demolition process, there was a floor cut out that was very poorly done, that we didn't notice. It was unnoticed until the floors and walls were removed. Fortunately, at this location, it's also where we were going to have the workroom, some equipment, so we needed to make sure that that area was structurally stable. It was where the HVAC equipment went from the first floor to the second floor and up through the roof. And it looked like somebody just took a hammer and pounded the floor out. The edges were very jagged, and it just wasn't very safe. We had the structural engineer look at that, and they made some recommendations that we felt were absolutely necessary. And the last component that's on here is another structural item where the old commission chambers was. It was very unknown at the time, but again, as we removed drywall, it became apparent that the commission chambers, when it was constructed, it was not built integrally to the other sections of the building that were older. So as the contractor was going through that, they said they weren't comfortable just installing it as designed. We re-engaged our structural engineer and architect. They came up with some structural members that would make sure that we could hold to the original design, that spanned that nice grand lobby that we have in the front of the building. And those members are going to be secure. One thing that we did find is that as we were going through this, the foundation plans on the original drawing were accurate. So where we're putting those, we're very confident that we have the caissons and grade beams and things that we need to make sure that we're supporting the roof. There was an estimate of a couple inches of sag if we didn't do these structural items, which would have weighed down, would have caused some severe problems in the future to the entire structure. So these were things that if we hadn't done them, we would have delayed the project for months. So we moved forward with them, and the contractor has done the majority of the work. They're currently removing the asbestos in Phase 2, and they're making some adjustments to that structural member, one of those structural members on the western side of the lobby. One thing that I can say is to avoid this in the future, we're taking as many photos as we can, and we're doing as built. We'll make sure that all of this information is incorporated into the construction documents, uploaded to our servers. So anything in the future that's done, they'll have all the information that they need.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. It's impossible to minimize a $483,000 change order, but in the grand scheme of things, that is less than 5% of what the total build-out is. I hope we can still say that at the end of the project. I understand that there will be additional charges for extending the contract a couple of more months. I know that you have, in the past, had great ability to negotiate those numbers down to a reasonable charge, so we're hopeful that you'll be able to do that as well.
Yes. Through the Commission President, to the commissioners, and to the public, there was a huge delay on the first phase of the project with receiving the rooftop HVAC units. That was delayed by production in Mexico and then shipping to the U.S. by several months. Contractor did a good job of trying to minimize any delays, getting other work done. And one thing that we've done, per the contractor and the architect's recommendation, is combine Phases 2 and 3 into Phase 2, which should significantly reduce the duration of the project. We're estimating a two- to three-month improvement, which that should be dollar savings to the project overall. We don't have the exact delay yet. We're hoping to understand and get a better grasp on exactly when the project will be completed, based on this asbestos removal. The subcontractor estimated six weeks or more to do it. They started a couple weeks ago. So if they can expedite that work and cut some time off, hopefully, we're moving the opening up and we're not delaying the project and incurring additional costs on delays.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Having known Mr. Klein now for 10 years plus, I'm confident that he would not spend a single dollar of the public treasury if he wouldn't spend it himself. He's very, very careful with a buck, and he does it right, and he makes sure that, as he indicated, that we have good records for the future. Somebody didn't do it right in the past, but you're going to make sure that we get it done right for the future. No one will know, remember you or this commission for having done it the right way, but it'll be important 20, 30, 40 years from now that it was done the right way. And the only, I guess, to put in some context, I would say that the whole project came in significantly under what we had estimated it would cost. This is an increase, but we are still getting a great product at a very, very good price. And we have, simply have to make sure that we have a safe environment for our police officers, for the court staff, and those who are visitors. The only question I have, where did the old commission trapdoor end up? It sounds as though we got out of there just in the nick of time, so just curious about where that went.
I do find it interesting that what they discovered, and we're paying for it now, was that the existing commission chambers was never tied to the rest of the building. It was just like out there floating. Well, all the while I was there, I felt like I was floating too. But I'm glad that now they're tying it together so that 100 years from now, they'll look back and they'll say, this looks like a really completed project, which is what we're going to get out of it. Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 11, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Parks and Watercraft for the participation in the 2024 Marine Patrol Assistant Grant Program for the Police Department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Chapter, Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just a reminder that we were able to acquire the Boston Whaler from Kelly's Island, who was no longer using it. And so we have virtually zero capital costs, and the state provides much if not all of the operating funds. So it's a good deal for us. It's an important part of Sandusky, and we do need to make sure that we are able to patrol these areas that you can't reach from land.
I think with this grant, we get a 75% discount, don't we? Our match is 25%, I believe. Pretty, pretty, pretty good value for your dollar, I think. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item, item number 12.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie County Sheriff for the provision of public safety dispatching services for the City of Sandusky Police, Fire, and Service Departments commencing on January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Chapter, Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just a reminder that we were able to acquire the Boston Whaler from Kelly's Island, who was no longer using it. And so we have virtually zero capital costs, and the state provides much if not all of the operating funds. So it's a good deal for us. It's an important part of Sandusky, and we do need to make sure that we are able to patrol these areas that you can't reach from land.
I think with this grant, we get a 75% discount, don't we? Our match is 25%, I believe. Pretty, pretty, pretty good value for your dollar, I think. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item, item number 12.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie County Sheriff for the provision of public safety dispatching services for the City of Sandusky Police, Fire, and Service Departments commencing on January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just a little bit of history, although the chief recounts most of this. We have indeed have had conversations since 2001 about coordinated regional dispatch. This has been our key success of intergovernmental cooperation and savings for all the different government entities. We'd be paying a multiple of what we're paying now with this agreement. And it was, there was some tough sledding early on in terms of getting people on the same page as there always is when you try to make a change. But we were able to do so, and this continued, that cooperation continues to provide benefits and dividends to us all these years later. So happy to support this.
Additional comments, Commissioners? We, we do complain every few years when the number goes up, but the reality is, the cost of doing it on our own is about twice this amount. So it still is of value. I know that Chief Oliver sits on that board that plays a role in establishing this, and he represents us well. So I'm very supportive of this. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. That concludes our agenda, and we will turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I have several donations tonight. First is $2,000 for the K9 account was received from the American Legion Post Number 83. If we get a motion to accept that.
So moved. Second. But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
Second is a donation of $125 for youth scholarships, and was received from the Chubby Bargain Bins, and that's for the Rec Department. If we get a motion to...
So moved. Second. But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
Next one is, I know a number of Commissioners attended this. The Center for Peace Through Understanding donated a peace poll in memory of Talon Floor for installation in the Talon Floor Park, named in his honor at Cleveland Road and Erie Boulevard. The poll was installed by city staff and dedicated on Monday, December 4th, with over 30 people in attendance. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second. But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
The next one is, I know a number of Commissioners attended this. The Center for Peace Through Understanding donated a peace poll in memory of Talon Floor for installation in the Talon Floor Park, named in his honor at Cleveland Road and Erie Boulevard. The poll was installed by city staff and dedicated on Monday, December 4th, with over 30 people in attendance. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second. But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
Then Nanette Gus of the Friends of the Greenhouse donated Scooby Doo and Snoopy figurines to be a part of the Washington Park Holidays Lights Display. The figurines are riding a kayak in a new water with blue lights featured by the lighthouse mound. Motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second. But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
And the last one is a donation of $5,000 that was made under the trust of Paulette Porter for the purchase of Holiday Lights in Washington Park. Motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second. But a motion and a second discussion. That, without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
I think the last, this is the last donation. The City of Sandusky Parks and Rec Division, in collaboration with Destination Sandusky, received $5,376 from the Erie County Community Foundation and $4,624 from the Randolph and Estelle Dorn Foundation for a total of $10,000 to support educational programming for the 2024 Total Eclipse of Sandusky Festival. The three-day festival from April 6th to April 8th will offer free music and education for area residents and visitors as we celebrate this once-in-a-generation phenomenon. The Jackson Street Pier will be the main location for the festivities, with Shores and Islands Ohio providing a regional landing page and promotion for the Total Eclipse of Sandusky Festival and other area events at their website, www.shoresandislands.com/eclipse. Do we need a motion to accept that, Jason? No? Okay. I guess that's just info.
Good.
But it was S-U-N-D-U-S-K-Y on here, so just play with words. The Forestry Division will be performing Christmas Tree Collection throughout the city during the week of January 8th, and will distribute further details through our website and social media. Residents may also drop off trees from January 8th to the 12th at two locations, the Sandusky Street Boat Launch Overflow Parking Lot or the Kiwanis Park Parking Lot.
Additional comments, Commissioners? We do complain every few years when the number goes up, but the reality is, the cost of doing it on our own is about twice this amount. So it still is of value. I know that Chief Oliver sits on that board that plays a role in establishing this, and he represents us well. So I'm very supportive of this. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Murray, do you call the role on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. That concludes our agenda, and we will turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I have several donations tonight. First is $2,000 for the K-9 account was received from the American Legion Post Number 83. If we get a motion to accept that.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
Second is a donation of $125 for youth scholarships, and was received from the Chubby Bargain bins, and that's for the Rec. Department. If we get a motion to...
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
Next one is, I know a number of Commissioners attended this, the Center for Peace Through Understanding donated a peace pole in memory of Talon Floor for installation in the Talon Floor Park, named in his honor at Cleveland Road and Erie Boulevard. The pole was installed by city staff and dedicated on Monday, December 4th, with over 30 people in attendance. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without thanks.
Then Nanette Guss of the Friends of the Greenhouse donated Scooby-Doo and Snoopy figurines to be a part of the Washington Park Holidays Lights Display. The figurines are riding a kayak in a new water with blue lights featured by the lighthouse mound. Motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that is approved, without our thanks to Ms. Guss.
And the last one is a donation of $5,000 that was made under the trust of Paulette Porter for the purchase of Holiday Lights in Washington Park. Motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. That, without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, without our thank you.
I think the last, this is the last donation. The City of Sandusky Parks and Rec Division, in collaboration with Destination Sandusky, received $5,376 from the Erie County Community Foundation and $4,624 from the Randolph and Estelle Dorn Foundation for a total of $10,000 to support educational programming for the 2024 Total Eclipse of Sandusky Festival. The three-day festival from April 6th to April 8th will offer free music and education for area residents and visitors as we celebrate this once-in-a-generation phenomenon. The Jackson Street Pier will be the main location for the festivities, with Shores and Islands Ohio providing a regional landing page and promotion for the Total Eclipse of Sandusky Festival and other area events at their website, www.shoresandislands.com/eclipse. Do we need a motion to accept that? Jason? No? Okay. I guess that's just info.
Good.
But it was S-U-N-D-U-S-K-Y on here, so just play with words. The Forestry Division will be performing Christmas Tree Collection throughout the city during the week of January 8th, and will distribute further details through our website and social media. Residents may also drop off trees from January 8th to the 12th at two locations, the Sandusky Street Boat Launch Overflow Parking Lot or the Kiwanis Park Parking Lot. For questions regarding Christmas Tree Collection, please call 419-627-5884. With winter on the way, we would like to remind residents of a few extra steps to take to avoid frozen water lines inside and outside the house, including setting thermostats at 55 degrees minimum, insulating exposed pipes, and letting the cold water faucet trickle continuously during extreme cold weather. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter months, we highly recommend that you contact the city to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which would lead to costly repairs for the property owner. The customer accounting office can be reached at 419-627-5893 to arrange water being turned off. Lastly, I need a motion to set a public hearing that will be conducted on January 22nd, 2024, to invite the public to comment on an appeal of a planning commission decision to deny a rezoning change on Cleveland Road. The case was evaluated by Planning Commission on May 23rd, 2023. The subject addresses include all parcels on the south side of Cleveland Road from address number 2050 through 2068. The request denied by Planning Commission was to rezone these parcels from residential R2F and R1-75 to residential business. Get a motion to set that public hearing.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Chairman, is this a reference for an Airbnb or something? Is that what they want to do? Is that the concept?
Yes.
Somebody wants an Airbnb? Okay.
Ms. Murray, will you call the role on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That public hearing is set.
That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'll take any questions.
Comments or questions for the city manager? Now, we'll move to items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioners? Any items of new business, Commissioners? New business. I have, I have one that, well, housekeeping here. I ask our commission clerk to send to each of you a list of what are reappointments to our boards and commissions. None of these are new appointments. They are simply reappointments, and I believe the staff has reached out to these people and have gotten their willingness to continue to serve. So I believe that I can ask for a motion to approve this entire slate of reappointments, if I can have a motion to do that.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Murray, do you call the role on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those appointments are made for the next few years, anyway.
Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wanting... I'd like to make a motion for a one-time-only check for $2,000 from the city for Care and Share, for our Christmas toy and money drive that we had this past weekend. I thought we did really well down there to help out. There's a lot of needs in the area right now. If you look at the food drives around the community, churches, it seems like every street you go down, there's somebody saving a food drive. Ogo's really been ahead of it. But Care and Share's in the downtown. What a contrast to see all these beautiful buildings and, you know, restaurants and that. And then we got a guy Saturday, I think most of the Commissioners was there, sleeping outside with a duffel bag, and we went and we tried to figure out where he got electric for his little electric, you know, Zambal... Well, John, you were down. Most of the Commission was down there, and that's an eye-opener, so.
Got a motion for a $2,000 donation to Care and Share. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. I agree, Mr. Wantington, those, you've been spearheading that kind of operation or that kind of participation at commission for as long as I've been around, for 10, 11 years, and it is always, it always is a worthwhile event. And I've said this publicly, and I will say it again, the things that Care and Share does are literally unbelievable. If you give them a dollar, they get $3 of value out of it. That's how hard they squeeze a buck. They make, take advantage of second harvest. They take advantage of recycling clothing. They serve unbelievably in this community. They serve 700 people a month in our community. That's a lot of people that, if they're not there, have to find another place for food, for clothing. So hunger is year-round. It's not just at the holidays. And I know that we tend to make these efforts around the holidays, but Care and Share is there 52 weeks a year. So I would encourage all of us to continue to support them.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I'm happy to support the motion with a second. And there was a reference that most of us were down there. There were five Commissioners, city manager, I think, police chief, fire chief, both stopped by as well. And I want to assure the public that no time was anyone discussing public business, city business, but I never heard so many people boast about how they cook their turkeys. It was really, it was very entertaining.
Exactly. Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner...
Mr. Shaw was here. He told some nice stories.
Yeah. Saw a lot of friendly faces.
He's still talking.
Ms. Murray, will you poll the Commission on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That motion passes. We'll send him a check.
Any additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole?
I'd like to pass this on for subsequent Commissions. As we begin to do more, and it's about our volunteer Commissions, that we seem to have a great deal of problem getting people to join up with. I think we are, if we're going to be a regional area that having input, and we expect the folks from the county and the townships and surrounding area to come to town to spend money, that perhaps we could open up some of the positions on all of our committees, a percentage, you could say 10%, whatever you suggest. But I think expanding the talent pool and opportunities to give us some insights into what kinds of things will make this region and this area and this city better, I think we'd be well-served if we opened that up to other folks. As I recall, we made, we got Jason by that, by doing that, to get him on the Recreation Committee to begin with, and that's been a great success. I'm certain that there are other folks in the, outside, across Perkins Avenue that have expertise and experience in things that we probably could benefit from. So just something for you folks to consider going forward.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I don't want to make a motion now, but if there were a motion at the next meeting to call in legislation in the new year, I would be supportive of that. I want to make sure law has an opportunity to research whether there are certain boards and Commissions that absolutely must be a city resident. But we have seen on many occasions over the years that the 25,000 people here often have, but do not always have, the expertise necessary to fill every single one of these boards. And if we're going to leave more and more provincialism behind, I think that's important, that we open these up. That's true on a number of our existing committees and boards, but I think it could be liberalized a little bit.
Correct. So no additional items of new business. We will move to the public portion of our meeting. Any comments regarding any item that pertains to city business? Please share with us your name, address, and comments.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. My questions were not answered on GSP, so I guess there's not going to be any transparency at all from what they're doing for us. As far as I'm concerned, we pay top dollar for our staff and our city manager. And what Mr. Whoopsers stood up here and said, staff is supposed to be doing, this city's supposed to be responsible for those duties, and we're firming them out to GSP, and they're closed off for transparency. Just like Dennis said, that's counterproductive to have transparency. I'm thoroughly disgusted with that, and there's no excuse for that. When you look at the salaries, the top salaries that we pay here, I'm looking at John as just an operations manager, and GSP's taken over the rest. It's duplication. We just saved GSP three, three of their top people their jobs by giving them $300,000. I just heard her say that the first $125,000 that we gave GSP was for operations. Do you know what operations is? That's salaries. Salaries come out of operations. I'm disappointed in this city that, you know, if you're going to pay that kind of salary, you might as well just lay off the Development Department. What are we paying them for?
Any other comments, Ms. Johnson, or are you done?
No, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Additional comments regarding any issue pertaining to city business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
In regard to Mrs. Johnson, I've wrestled with this, and we can back and forth. At the end of the day, I don't, we have not progressed as well as we would like to with the efforts that we made up to now. It's important that we, that our businesses and our city actually grow. We've actually lost 2.3% according to the Census Bureau since 20, between 2020 and 22 in terms of census. We've lost 2.3%. I'm not, I don't have expertise, but it seems to me that our downtown is surviving, but not thriving. And what's been presented, although it's mostly, it seems very aspirational, but the goals they have at least put us in the right direction. And adding more folks to the game to try and make this happen is probably the only option we have at this point. I don't, I recognize it's a lot of money. I think we've actually spent money worse than this on things that this at least has, if they reach half of the goals that they want, it'll be impressive for the community. It's really going to be up to the next commission to decide at the end of the next year what to do. But Sharon, I'm with you about, with your reservations, but I don't see any options that we shouldn't take a chance on this this time. I, otherwise, this is, I think this is a good idea at this point, what they're trying to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali?
I've also wrestled with this, not taken it lightly, but you've got Civista Bank, you've got Firelands Hospital, you've got Cedar Fair, you've got the Erie Counties putting in money, you've got Erie Shores and Islands, they're all putting in money. So I think it's worth the chance to put in this money and go along with all these different funding mechanisms who believe this might be the way to go, and see how it pans out. Like Mr. Poole pointed out, we, at the end of the year, at the end of next year, we can reconsider and see if they meet their benchmarks and proceed in that fashion.
What are the benchmarks? You can tell us.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole?